Good morning and welcome to the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. At this time, we ask that you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, I am Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, chairing today's Civil Service and Labor hearing, standing in for Chair Carmen De La Rosa. Thank you for joining today's hearing and vote on a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Speaker Adams, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation to increase the wages and improve the working conditions of home care aides to support these workers and ensure essential growth in New York's vital home care workforce. Today, the Committee will hear public testimony from healthcare and disability rights advocates. Following public testimony, the Committee will hold a vote on the resolution. This pre-considered resolution calls on the state to take holistic action to increase wages and improve working conditions for home care workers. New York State is facing a dire home care worker shortage. Between 2021 and 2040, New York State's population of adults aged 65 and older is expected to grow by 25%, and the number of adults over age 85 is expected to grow by 75%. Projections have found that to meet growing demand, the number of home care aides would need to reach 700,000 by 2028, up from 440,000 in 2018. Despite their important and demanding work, pay for home care aides is very low. As a result of minimum wages and Medicaid reimbursement rates that are fixed at the state level, typical wages for home care aides who serve city residents are $18.55 per hour, plus an additional $2.54 per hour, either in the form of wages or a supplemental benefit. Home care shifts can be long, sometimes totaling 24 hours, known as a live-in shift, only 13 of which are compensable in most cases under regulations of the State Department of Labor. The low pay of home care incentivizes some home care aides to seek as many shifts as possible, placing a significant burden on their personal health and well-being. As a result of low wages and the city's high cost of living, many full-time home care aides are forced to rely on Medicaid and public assistance. Out of concern for the low wages and difficult working conditions of home care aides, worker advocates have called for compensation for every hour worked with commensurate reimbursement through Medicaid. This resolution calls on the council to pass the Fair Pay for Home Care Act sponsored by State Senator Rachel May and State Assemblymember Amy Pollan, as well as the Home Care Savings and Reinvestment Act sponsored by State Senator Rivera and State Assemblymember Amy Pollan. Together, these bills would increase wages for home care aides and repeal the partially capitated Medicaid-managed long-term care program and replace it with a fee-for-service model to cut down on healthcare administration costs, as well as ensure continuity of care for patients and adequate reimbursement for providers. These critical bills will strengthen and support the home care workforce, and we are urging our state partners to take swift action to pass them now. Now, I will turn it over to Committee Counsel, who will call on today's public witnesses.
Thank you Chair, we will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table, or remain seated. Once your name has been called, and for virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the Sergeant at Arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the Sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. First, we'll have Ms. Tara Klein, and then after that, will be followed by Tori Newman-Campbell.
Thank you. Good morning. All right, thank you Chair Dinowitz for hosting today's hearing, and to members of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor for the opportunity to present testimony today on this resolution by Speaker Adams on the home care workforce. My name is Tara Klein, I am the Deputy Director of Policy and Advocacy for United Neighborhood Houses. UNH is a policy and social change organization that represents neighborhood settlement houses in New York City. Three of our settlement house members offer nonprofit home care services to their communities as state-licensed home care services agencies. A couple of years ago, they joined together with a total of 10 organizations that provide home care services as a broader coalition known as the Community Home Care Consortium, and this group is working to develop new models of community-based home care that make financial sense for nonprofit organizations. A lot of my comments today draw from policy conversations with that group. So, thank you to Speaker Adams for introducing the resolution to the Committee and for taking swift action today. Today's hearing and vote demonstrates the council's support for the home care workforce and recognizes the deep and urgent needs of the sector. We appreciate that the council recognizes the state's outsized role in regulating this industry. The resolution covers a lot, recognizing that this is a complicated issue that requires a great deal of intervention, and UNH supports the resolution. We strongly support fair pay for home care. Despite some actions by the state legislature to raise home care wages in the last couple of years, there have been some actions at the state level through the budget that have made these small raises effectively moot. Fair pay for home care is still urgently needed, it is the silver bullet to address many of the challenges in the home care sector. We agree with the resolution's framing around the challenge of 24-hour care, a nuanced issue that boils down to paying workers for every hour worked and ensuring no one is forced to work a 24-hour shift. UNH has partnered with our provider network for many years to reform the unjust state Department of Labor regulation that only pays workers for 13 hours of a 24-hour shift in most cases. We point to state legislation that we support that would address this issue by Senator Persaud and Assemblymember Epstein by using split shifts. UNH is still analyzing the Home Care Savings and Reinvestment Act, which would eliminate the use of managed long-term care plans in the home care system. This legislation was born from provider concerns that MLTCs are not fully passing through the value of any state-funded home care worker pay raises to them, thereby causing financial distress, as providers legally have to cover worker raises without being fully paid for them. The legislation is still relatively new and proposes deep structural reforms to the system, and we're analyzing the potential impact to services through its implementation. There are some questions and concerns, for example, around the timeframe and process to return to a fee-for-service model, how to conduct assessments, and whether there's a mechanism to ensure the savings from this bill are specifically reinvested in home care. But the concept shows a lot of promise, and we believe the bill is drafted in a way where many of those details and concerns could be addressed with a careful implementation process. So, thank you again for the opportunity, we'll continue to do our work at the state level, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning Chair Dinowitz, and thank you to the Committee on Civil Service and Labor for allowing us to testify here today. My name is Tori Newman-Campbell, and I'm the Legislative Coordinator for New York at 1199 SEIU. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today on behalf of over 300,000 New York Members of 1199 SEIU. 1199 members work in just about every healthcare setting across the state, that includes hospitals, nursing homes, community-based organizations, and home care. We appreciate the New York City Council's resolution calling on the New York State Legislature and Governor to increase wages and improve working conditions of home care workers and growing New York's vital home care workforce. Most home care workers are women, women of color, immigrants earning low wages. They do important work supporting seniors and people with disabilities with their activities of daily living. They allow people to age in place instead of in nursing homes, and they allow people with disabilities to live with a degree of independence and control over their lives. Policymakers have too often undervalued this vital work, especially the work of women and women of color. For example, Medicaid only pays a worker for 13 hours even when they're required to remain in the consumer's home for 24 hours for an overnight shift. One result of these poor working conditions is a severe shortage of home care workers at a time when New York's population continues to age. If we are going to provide care to those who need it, we must expand the home care workforce by making these good jobs with benefits where people can support their families. This resolution ensures that the collective voice of the City Council is raised in support of policies that would enact this vision. Fair pay for home care would ensure that home care workers make at least 150% over the minimum wage. The Home Care Savings and Reinvestment Act would produce savings which can be reinvested in the home care services and home care worker wages and benefits. For some background, in 2011, the state handed control of Medicaid home care to private insurance companies, arguing that privatization would save money through improved care management and care coordination. Instead, managed long-term care has cost the state billions of dollars and enriched the profits for for-profit insurance companies. In the past four years alone, an analysis commissioned by our union estimated that private insurance companies have pocketed over $5.5 billion, excuse me, billion with a B, in administrative fees and profit that could have gone to services for consumers and wages for workers. The Home Care Savings and Reinvestment Act would have Medicaid pay directly for home care services rather than going through insurance company middlemen. Care management would also be paid for directly, and consumers who want to be in a fully managed care plan would still be able to choose that option. The savings, the savings would come from eliminating fees and profit that currently flow to huge for-profit companies such as Molina, Centene, and Anthem. Recently, former New York State Budget Director Paul Francis assessed the proposal and concluded it could save nearly $1 billion each year. As you can imagine, this bill has generated tremendous opposition from the managed care companies who take their cut of administrative fees and profit from our tax dollars, which are intended for home care services. You can imagine how hard they're fighting to preserve this golden egg. Worse, they are trying to divert attention from their profits and blame home care workers and consumers for cost increases in these programs, supporting proposed cuts to home care worker wages and hours of care for consumers. That's why the City Council's resolution is so critical. We need to ensure home care workers are getting paid proper wages and are being paid for every hour of work they put in. The state has the ability to change this, and they must before more seniors and people with disabilities are forced into nursing homes. 1199 SEIU and other home care workers have been in this fight for years and will not give up. We are pleased to join the NYC Council, and I hope you will continue to take action on behalf of home care workers and the consumers they care for. Thank you.
Thank you, we will now turn to remote testimony. Brian O'Malley, please begin, once the Sergeant gives you the go-ahead to begin. Thank you.
Starting time.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present and testify on this important topic, and I want to thank you for having this conversation. You know, so you've given a number of different statistics this morning, and I just wanted to highlight a few more that were from the Center for an Urban Future and ARP. You know, 15% of New York City's population is over 65, and that number is growing rapidly. It's increased by 36% over the past decade, and grown by at least 32% in at least every borough of the city. One in four older residents of the Bronx live in poverty, one in five older residents of Brooklyn live in poverty, and one in six older residents in Manhattan live in poverty. It is clear that not only are we going to have to have the conversation of how we provide aging services, but how we value those who provide those services to the individuals who need them. This is a critical part of that conversation. This resolution is one picture of how we can have a future. This resolution focuses on delivering the public monies that we have as close to the end user as possible, with the workers that are providing services, making sure that they are fairly compensated and respected for the services that they provide. It makes sure that we can actually provide the generous services that we are committed ethically to offering to disabled and older New Yorkers. Unfortunately, the other side is also currently part of the conversation right now across New York State. Everyone may have seen the New York Times piece recently about cuts to self-direction in the state of Indiana, but those cuts aren't just being proposed in Indiana, those cuts are being proposed here at home, in New York. Governor Hochul, as Ms. Newman-Campbell said, is looking, instead of cutting managed long-term care plans that are not serving a valid purpose, whose experiment has failed, she is looking to cut wages and benefits for workers in the state's Consumer-Directed Personal Assistance Program by over 12%, simultaneously sending a message that they are not as important or as valuable as other home care workers. She's looking to cut eligibility in the program by 100,000. She's looking to-
Time expired.
Sorry, all right, thank you.
You can finish your last thought, yes.
Thank you for the opportunity. I was just gonna say, she is also looking to take steps that would end, possibly end HRA's ability to offer CDPA in the fee-for-service program. And that's why this conversation is important, because this reflects the future that New York City and New York State want and need, so thank you.
Thank you, we've been joined by Councilmember Botcher. We will take a brief recess before we reconvene for the vote. Thank you all, and thank you for your testimony. Thank you, we are reconvening for this hearing. We're good? Okay, we are reconvening for the hearing, we've been joined by Councilmember Julie Menon, Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Botcher, Councilmember Salam, and virtually we've been joined by Councilmember Kaban, and we will hear one more public testimony over Zoom.
Mr. Mabak Tiam, please proceed with your testimony, once the Sergeant gives you the go-ahead, thank you.
You may begin.
Hello everyone, my name is Mabak Tiam, I'm the Housing and Health Community Organizer at Center for the Independence of the Disabled in New York. We are a nonprofit organization that advocate for people with disabilities in the five boroughs of New York City, and we are the voice of people with a disability here in New York City. We are, our office is located in Manhattan and Queens, but we represent the five boroughs. So, I wanted to just shed light on a couple of points about the healthcare workers and workers who, who help, the home care workers. So, we all know that Entro 175 passed a couple of years ago, and it was about trying to regulate the work that people are doing, and they were given up to 12 to 13 hours per day, and also 40 hours per week. So, I think it was a way or another to try to control the, the system in a way that they can know how to regulate the, the job that people are doing, also the funding that was coming from the government. But trying to do so ended up being very complicated. But trying to do so ended up being very complicated for the patients, but also for the workers. It is very hard to understand that people do this job in order to earn their living. So, because they are not getting paid well, they have to work 50 hours or sometimes more in order to provide to their families. So, trying to reduce their hours is detrimental. It has a detrimental impact on time. It also has a detrimental impact on people with disabilities who may need care at later hours, maybe in the middle of the night, maybe in a time when they cannot see their family members to help them. And these homeowners can come and assist them and be able to talk to them and be able to help them in a way that maybe some family members wouldn't be able to. I feel like the city is doing a good job in order to help the communities, but we need to always try to think about our consumers. We need to always try to think about people who are struggling and how we can try to care to them. I will submit a written testimony with more detailed point about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn it over to the clerk to call roll.
Good morning. William Martin, Committee Clerk. Roll call vote Committee on Civil Service and Labor regarding pre-considered resolution. Dinowitz.
Yes.
Moya.
Sorry, I don't know if that was recorded or not.
Sorry, we weren't able to hear you.
I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Botcher.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
With a vote of six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and no abstentions, item, the resolution has been adopted by the committee, and roll will be held open on request of the chair.